Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Town Hall meeting on the 2016 referenda. We'll go up to the opening comments from President DiCipio.
Thank you, Julia. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight on this cold evening and those of you that are tuning into our cable channel. This is an important issue that's going to come up on the ballot on March 15. We have a wonderful community. We received about six awards last year, from the safest community to best housing market. And this didn't come by chance. We worked very hard to get our community up and in shape and where we can all be proud of. And our homes are -- we're all proud of our homes. We want to make sure our homes are in good shape so that value of our homes stay up. And our community is really an extension of all our homes put together. So we want to place value in our community. Now whether your street was done recently or not, the perception throughout the community when people drive through it is basically what the community is like. And we've listened to our residents over the years and we've responded in accordance with what their requests were. And one of the biggest requests that we have is that our streets are deteriorating. And their streets are deteriorating at a more rapid rate than we're able to fix them. The cost of them is going up. The money that we're receiving from the state is going down. We want to provide the services that we provide to all our residents in a quality manner. We want our quality of life to stay where it's at. So we're responding to the requests of our residents and to do something about our streets. So the board voted back in the fall to go to referendum. A $11.2 million bond referendum, one for $10 million for our roads, and then $1.2 million for a new ladder truck and a new fire truck. The ladder truck and fire truck, we look at life safety issues and we want to make sure that we respond appropriately and we have the equipment that we need and it's all up to date. The ladder truck, we feel is necessary because of some of the buildings that we have in our community so we can respond appropriately. But to get there and get back and for the safety of our children and our cars and the upkeep of our homes and the quality of our homes, our roads are very important to us. So what we want to do tonight is just give you the information so that when you walk into the polling booth, we just ask you to vote. And if you walk into the polling booth, you see the two questions that Julia will bring up and you have an educated reason to vote on them. What we don't want is our residents to walk into the voting booth and not know what are these questions about? I haven't heard anything about the referendum. So we want to make sure our residents are very informed about this because it's important to us and to our community. So I'll pass it on to Julia who will go through the referendum questions, go through why we're going there, how we got here, and answer any questions that we may have. Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Julia Sadio. I'm the village manager for the Village of LaGrange Park. I have the pleasure of serving the residents in this community and working with such a great staff and village board. We're going to do things a little bit differently tonight as compared to the first Town Hall meeting on the referenda. Because tonight's session is being videotaped, we have to make sure that the questions that come from you and the audience are well captured and recorded for the viewers at home. So what we're asking folks to do for this evening after the presentation during the question and answer portion is that you take any questions that you have and you write them down on some cards over there. And President DiCipio will walk around and see if anybody would like a card and a pen and you can write your questions down there. Alternatively, there are two microphones up here on the white table. So when we start the question and answer session, if you could come up to the table, please feel comfortable in doing so. We've answered so many really great questions from the community on the referenda, so we hope that you feel comfortable doing that. Come up to the table and take a microphone and ask your question. We did receive some questions over email today, so we're hoping to touch on that a little bit as well, just to make sure that those particular questions are answered. For housekeeping measures, the restrooms are outside in the lobby if you need to use those. We're going to start off with a presentation tonight. Let me make sure that my clicker's working. Then we're going to go to a question and answer session. There's additional information that's available for residents up on our website. We also have some handouts here. We plan to do an additional mail-out to the community which will be sent to each one of your homes on this issue as well. Our main goal is to make sure that our residents are informed on this issue. After we conclude the presentation, the president will come back up with some closing comments and he'll make sure that he introduces any members of the village board that are here. We had a strong showing at our first Town Hall meeting, so he'll make sure that he acknowledges the board that's here. But I would like to make mention of some members of the staff that were really instrumental in all of the work that's been done in making sure that our residents are informed on this issue and putting together the programs that are being requested to be funded through a bond referendum. Those folks are Brendan McLaughlin. He's our Director of Public Works. Brendan, if you could please wave for folks. He's done a tremendous amount of work in evaluating the streets and putting together a number of materials so that we have the information that we need, that the village board has the information that they need to be able to consider their options. I also have with me Chief Dean Magus. He's our fire chief. He's done a tremendous amount of work in evaluating the fire equipment and making sure that all the data is brought forward so that we can share that with the community so that there's an understanding of just how great the need is for the equipment that we're asking for funding for. And also, I'd like to make mention of another staff member, Finance Director Larry Knoller. Larry, if you can wave. He makes sure that all the numbers add up, they make sense. He's put together all of the projections and we're very lucky to have him make sure that everything is accurate so that we can provide that information in terms of projections and estimated tax impacts for our community. And I would be remiss if I did not make mention of our village engineer, Paul Flood, who has worked so closely with Brendan McLaughlin on all of the road work and the road evaluation that is done on an annual basis and in particular for the work that we're doing here with regard to the referendum. So we will get moving with the presentation. So this is the nuts and bolts of the referendum. As President DiCipio mentioned, the village approved the placement of two propositions to issue $11.2 million in bonds to fund road infrastructure and fire equipment. These propositions or referenda will be placed on the March 15 ballot. We've been talking with a lot of folks out in the community. This is probably the ninth presentation that we've done on this issue throughout the community. We've talked with the school districts, we've talked with the park district, the library district, Plymouth Place and Bethlehem Woods, and we get all kinds of questions. And I want to make sure that folks understand that the same ballot that you're going to be voting for the primary presidential election is the same ballot for which you will receive these propositions. So it's one in the same. You don't need to ask for anything special and it will be there for you. The questions are going to be separate because by state law, we are not allowed to group together requests for unrelated items. So the questions or the propositions must be asked separately for separate needs. This is an important issue for the voters to decide. President DiCipio mentioned this. This is a critical issue for our community and we'll go through that tonight. And it's just so important that folks understand what is involved with the road program, all of the information. And if you have any questions, if we haven't covered that, it's important that you ask those questions. If you don't think of that tonight, you can always send an email to the village. And the email address is info@lagrangepark.org. We've had information in the road clippings as well. We will continue to put information in our weekly electronic newsletter. And again, we'll have another mailing going out to residents' homes. President DiCipio mentioned this in his opening comments. The condition of our roads is our number one complaint. Nothing even comes into a close second. We are very much aware of the condition of our roads. We drive them every day. We're constantly evaluating them. We know what the condition is. We've taken a photograph of every single block of every road that's included in the preliminary plan for the road bonds. We are very aware of this. So having received this request, the board members have received this, staff has received this, as our number one complaint. This is the village's opportunity to respond to this complaint and offer an option to residents. Also, the village board goes through an annual strategic planning session every year. A couple of years ago, they focused on capital needs throughout the village. We looked at everything and when all was said and done and all the votes were taken and all the red, green, and yellow stickers were placed, roads rose to the top in terms of capital needs. So we are very much aware of the needs and the condition of our roads. A couple of things that we've done in response to the complaints with roads is we've increased our road repair funding in fiscal years 14, 15, and 16, the fiscal year that we're in. So this year, we will have spent over $1 million on road repairs. Last year, we did as well. And the year before that, we spent about $700,000 on road repairs. We've also sought out grant opportunities year after year. I've been here since 2008 and every year that I have been here, we've been able to secure, in some cases, some grants. Some were state grants for short portions or segments of roadways. I think we got a grant for Blanchen and Morgan, one block each. And we were also able to secure a grant from the federal government to DuKem and Avenue. So we look for these opportunities whenever they are available and grants are becoming more and more difficult to come by. If it is a FAU route or a federal route, we can get grant funding for those, but we don't have a lot of those roads in our village. I think we have four or five segments throughout the village that are eligible for federal funding. These would be collector routes. Nothing else in our village is eligible for federal funding. And in case, if you haven't guessed, there's very little money that's available at the state level anymore. They don't have a budget that they passed this year. So aside from seeking out grant opportunities, we've also conducted a local revenue study. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. It's just to make sure that we are looking at everything that we do in the provision of services to make sure that we're being cost-effective in the things that we do and make sure that no money is lost and that the fees are at the right level. And lastly, we conduct regular strategic planning sessions every year. The village board is very proactive in working with staff in identifying all of the threats, all of the concerns, all of the worries and problems of the village and looking at all of the potential options that are available to them and coming up with some potential solutions. So back in 2015, it was a little bit of a different year because instead of holding one strategic planning session, we held two. The first strategic planning session we held back in February of 2015 was the possibility of implementing tax increment financing district in our commercial areas. And so that study, that feasibility study, which is an economic development tool, is something that is underway now. And then we held a second session in June where we looked at our highest capital needs, our options for financing those capital needs, and ultimately, that is where the board made the recommendation at the June session to request funding in the form of a bond referendum to the voters. So what are some of the actions taken in recent years in order to do what we can to make sure that funding is available for our capital needs? There are a number of them and I'll go through them just very quickly. And you're probably thinking, well, what does this have to do with a bond referendum for roads or fire equipment? As far as the village is concerned, it's critically important because in order for us to go out to voters and make the big ask and ask them to support a bond referendum to pay for critical infrastructure needs, we need to make sure that our house is in order. We need to make sure that we have been responsible with the funds that we have received as a village. This is important. We have to know that there is definitely a need, that we are providing services in the most cost-effective way, and no matter how you slice it, there is just no way to provide funding for these additional needs and making the bond referendum an option to consider. So it's important that before we go and ask the voters whether or not they support this particular option, they need to know that we've been responsible with the public funds that we've received. So some of the things that we've done in recent years, we've streamlined services to create efficiencies and eliminate cost leakages. We've looked at this in every single department. We looked in 82 different areas of service provision. We have new fee structures in place for building and zoning activities, liquor licenses and vehicle stickers. We have new fine structures for certain violations. We've negotiated cost-effective wage increases with our unions. We have two unions here. And we have increased employee contributions to benefits. We maintain a paid-on-call fire department. This is important to note because this is particularly challenging. While we have a top-notch fire department for which we receive rave reviews for all the time, I hear it regardless if I go to Plymouth Place or I talk to the businesses in the community or I talk to residents, they tell me how great our fire department is. It's a paid-on-call fire department. It's not a careerist department. So the folks that serve in our fire department are residents of this community and they dedicate their time. And a lot of times, they have full-time jobs as firefighters in other communities. In other cases, they're professionals with a career somewhere else, but nonetheless, they dedicate their time to the paid-on-call fire department. And what this means is it's more challenging to manage, but it's a greater benefit to the community because the folks that are providing the services are your fellow residents. And also, there's not a single firefighter pension that's paid within our fire department. That results in a significant cost savings to the residents in this community and it also results in one of the most cost-effective fire departments around. I've looked at the budgets of other fire departments. I have not found one that runs as cost-effectively as the one that's run by Chief Magus. So kudos to the folks in the fire department and it absolutely does matter. We have also improved risk management practices. We have decreased claims to lower annual insurance premium. This matters. A few years ago, back in 2009, we were on the list, you know, kind of the hazard list of communities. We're one of 70 communities in a risk pool and all of the other communities around us, Western Springs, Brookfield, LaGrange, they're all in the same risk pool as we are and as well as 50 other communities. But we were at risk of being on the watch list, you know, with not great experience. We've worked really hard to turn that around and now we have one of the best performances. And as a result, we don't pay an extra premium for our annual risk contribution. We actually get a credit. So year after year, our contribution for our insurance has gone down and it's the lowest it's been in quite some time. So that's no small achievement and nothing gets overlooked. You know, we're looking at everything, every opportunity. We've applied for grants for roads, fire and police equipment and green infrastructure. We've been very successful in getting a lot of grants. Our village lobbyist, Chris Ganshaw, he's here in the front row. There's Chris. He's worked to make sure that every grant opportunity that's out there, that we get our application in and we do our best to secure any available grants that are out there. And he works with our legislators and the staff of the legislators to make sure that he's aware of opportunities for this village. And we've been very successful. We had an Army Corps of Engineers grant that was a half a million dollars paid for a water main project. We've received grants for roads. We have received a grant which is now frozen for the downspout disconnection program which supports stormwater management. We recently received a grant for our in-car video cameras. So the new in-car video cameras that are in all of our squad cars, those were paid from a Homeland Security grant through the county. So we did not pay for those. So we are looking for every opportunity that's available. And Dean, I know there's a number of grants that you've secured in the fire department. He's always good about getting his grant applications in. Also, I would like to make mention that we have applied for a grant for the fire ladder truck every year for the last six years to FEMA. Six years, correct? Five years. So we just submitted our fifth one and we have not been successful thus far. So we're looking at every opportunity to not have this cost be borne by the residents in the village. We look for every opportunity to bring your taxpayers, your tax dollars, the ones that you've already paid, back to the community. That's our job. We've also refinanced existing bonds for significant cost savings. We have refinanced our sewer bonds which come due in 2025. We refinanced those about a year ago. Our finance director did a great job in getting all of that work in order and that will end up saving the village and the residents $400,000 for the remaining term of those bonds. Lastly, we are looking at a TIF feasibility study for long-term sustainability. So a tax increment financing district is one of the very few tools that a municipality can use that's available for us, that the state of Illinois allows us to use in order to incentivize redevelopment and the improvement of public infrastructure in areas throughout our village once you establish a district. So that's something that we're looking at for each of our commercial areas throughout the village. So while we have taken a number of actions, we also have a number of challenges and we talked a little bit about those in the beginning and I want to touch upon those a little bit again because I think it's important that we do face our challenges head-on. That's the only way that they're going to get addressed. So our existing revenues are not sufficient to maintain the roads at an acceptable level. We currently, this is our road evaluation map where we grade Brendan and Paul, who I introduced earlier. They drive all the streets, they look at them very closely, and they evaluate every block and determine its condition and rank and prioritize them in order for which they should be done, should be addressed. And currently, we're at a 70-year cycle and this is quite daunting for us. So you can see, we rate them from poor to excellent and while we have done a pretty good job at getting some of the red streets done, as soon as the red streets get done, some of the orange streets turn red. So what we don't want to happen is to get exponentially further behind in addressing our road problems and we would like to address it at a level where we're getting caught up a little bit closer. Is it okay if we address the questions at the end of the presentation? There's going to be a lot of really nice photos for you to look at. Okay. So the challenges, we have about $5 million worth of roads in immediate need and about $5 million worth of roads that are deteriorating quickly. What this really means is that we have $5 million worth of roads that should have already been done and we have $5 million more that need to be addressed immediately. Some of the other challenges that we have is that while we've been able to increase the funding that we have for roads, it is no longer sustainable. So we were able to do that this year and a grant helped us do that, but we have done as much as we can to increase the funding for roads. But what we are finding is that when we increase the amount of money that we spend on roads, we can't do other things. So when we dedicate all of those funds to our roads, we are not buying the necessary equipment that we need in the public works department. We're certainly not able to buy it in the fire department and a lot of that equipment, those are big-ticket items. So spending more on roads means that there's very little spending for really anything else. And we also have a number of buildings for which it's our responsibility to keep up. We have work that needs to be done at both fire stations, just basic maintenance work in order to ensure that when it catches up to us, it's not disastrous. So we need to be responsible with the public property that we own, including the public Essentially, the message I'd like to get across is that our infrastructure needs cannot be delayed any longer. The more that we delay, we get exponentially behind. And what I placed at the bottom of this slide was an illustration to help you understand the structural imbalance that exists within our budget as compared to the capital needs that we have for this community. So our current budget, the fiscal year that we are currently in, which ends on April 30th, we have general fund revenues of $8.21 million and then we have general fund expenditures at $8.23 million. So we're about $20,000 in the red. I think we'll end up the year okay because some of our revenue projections are performing very well. But you don't know that when you go into planning a budget. You don't know how well your revenues are going to perform. So looking at the left side of the screen, this includes $600,000 in general fund capital. Okay? Now if you look over to our five-year plan, our five-year plan, which is what we hope to do, this is our plan of what we really need to do, this is what we want to do, this is what we need to do, what are the capital projects that we need to do over a five-year period. And it identifies $8 million in capital needs. And if you do the math, that's $1.6 million a year. So we're short about $1 million a year in the capital infrastructure and the capital needs that we need to get done. That doesn't include the other items that would be really nice if they were to get done. And sometimes, we have things that need to get done that just fall off the radar because there are so many other needs that are greater. So the other challenges that we have are the village has limited options for financing debt. Alternate revenue bonds, that's one way that we can borrow money. They will not get us ahead on the repaving cycle as they require a dedicated revenue source. So if we were to borrow an amount of money, we need a dedicated revenue source. And if we identified the dedicated revenue source, it's still going to be a payment that has to be made from our general fund budget. It's still going to drain the budget and it will take that money away from other needs. And the amount of money that we would be able to borrow really is not sufficient to catch us up on our repaving cycle. It's not significant enough. And the amount of the note that it would take to pay that would drain the budget. For borrowing a large amount of money, we cannot borrow without taxpayer approval. We are a non-home role community and we only have the authorities that are granted to us by state law. And the last note that I will make is that back in June, remember I talked about the strategic planning session where the board discussed its options for financing, large capital needs? They looked at a couple of different areas. They looked at the alternate revenue bonds and they recognized that really wasn't going to get us any further ahead in terms of catching us up with the road program. But they also looked at a tax cap increase, which is what the village did back in 2005, which was approved. And then they looked at the bond referendum. So in both cases, with the bond referendum, which is different than what was done in 2005, but in both cases, the voters do decide. But with the tax cap increase, which was done in 2005 over here on the right side of the screen, it increases the tax rate and the funds are unrestricted and can be used for any purpose, for operations, capital. They're really unrestricted. And really, it's a good thing that that was approved because it would have been very difficult for the village to sustain itself throughout the downturn in our economy with the Great Recession. It would be very difficult for the village to service all of the programs that we have and our residents with about $6.5 million. It's simply not enough revenue to do what we have to do and then with the obligations with pension and then the investments taking, it really, which ended up increasing our annual pension payment, it really put a strain on the village's budget. And without the tax cap increase and the additional revenue, we would have been in really bad shape. And we were able to sustain ourselves. We made a lot of changes in order to be more cost-effective and more efficient, but it was able to sustain us through that really rough few years. With the bond referendum, which is being asked for the March 15 ballot, it's different. The voters still decide. The voters still decide. Long-term borrowing is pledged by taxing power to repay the loan over the term. And the funds are restricted by the proposition and the official statements of the issuance. So what the ask is, within the proposition, and that, we'll show you what those questions are in a little bit, the funds are restricted to those uses only. They cannot be used for any other purpose. They cannot be used to fund a new roof at Fire Station 2. They can't be used for wages, overtime, or any operating expense. They can only be used for what is included in the question. So those are restricted. And for this particular bond referenda, any bond issuance would be payable over a 10-year So another challenge with finances is that we have the lowest property tax rate per capita of any of the area communities. Whenever I show this slide, I want to make sure that I tell residents and assure them that we have a really great relationship with all of our surrounding communities. We work with them very closely. So we, we don't want to make them look bad at all. So we covered up their names with a rose, so you couldn't see what their name was. But the first chart on top shows the property tax per capita, and LaGrange Park is down at the bottom. And the second chart below is what the property tax rate per capita would be if both bond referenda are passed. So we estimate that if both are passed, that we will continue to have the lowest property tax rate per capita. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention, which was the second bullet point on that slide, is we are primarily a bedroom community, which means that this is primarily where people sleep. It's not where they come to work. We don't have a strong commercial sector in our community. And what that means is, practically speaking, is our revenue base is less diversified than it would be in some of the other communities, particularly the communities that, that surround us. So our, our commercial sector is quite small. We bring in about a half a million dollars in sales tax per year for about eight point, out of 8.2 million dollars in revenue. So not a strong commercial sector. So when that happens, as a non-home role community, you're pretty dependent on other sources of revenue, and in most cases, that would be the property tax. So it's less diversified. And still, with a less diversified revenue base, we continue to have the lowest property tax rate per capita. So this is just some data that you can take in and kind of understand how cost-effective we try to be with the funds that we receive, whether it's through property tax, or other taxes, or fees, fine revenue. So this information we've included in the presentation, just so that folks understood what portion of the tax bill is related to village services. This looks at District 95 and 208. So if you're living in that area, then the village makes up about 9% of the total tax If you live in District 102, 204, then the village makes up about 10.9% of the tax bill. We received that question quite a bit, so we wanted to make sure that that information had been provided to our residents. Throughout 2015, when the Village Board was considering its options for financing large capital expenditures, there was creeping and increasing pressure from the state, because they had unresolved issues with their budget, which were having a very real impact on the village. And that made it increasingly difficult to deal with, how do we fund our capital needs? Now, when the board made the decision to approve a bond referenda for funding the capital needs as an option, they were not considering some of the funds that the state was holding up to the village. So there was a point in time where about nine months went by where we weren't receiving certain funds from the state, the motor fuel tax, 911 surcharge fees, and the use tax. If they would have continued non-payment of those revenues, it would have resulted in about $484,000 shortfall in our budget. But thankfully, legislation was passed, and those funds have been released, and we are now receiving those. And while we are, the state has still not resolved its budget problems, and they continue to run a significant deficit. And because of this, one of the options that they always look at and have looked at, since 2009 at least, Chris, at least 2009, is cutting our share of the income tax, which is called LGDF, or the Local Government Distributive Fund. So that's the local share of the income tax. So the village receives a significant amount of money, about $1.4 million. Where's Larry? How much do we receive annually in the LGDF? About $1.4 million? So we receive that annually, it's gone up this year, which is good news, but last year, the governor's speech talked about cutting that in half. There continues to be suggestions about cutting that at different levels to be able to close the deficit that the state is currently experiencing. So this is our portion of the income tax. It's a smaller portion than it used to be. It's been reduced in recent years, but this, this share of the income taxes, since income tax was legislated, was always intended to go to the local government. And this is constantly in threat, a threat that this will be cut. If it is cut, we don't stop doing roads. That's not an option. That's not a long-term sustainable option for a village, is to do away with capital needs, because those needs never go away. You have to make cuts to your operations, and that would be very devastating to the village. So we have that constant threat looming over us, and we have been aggressively lobbying our legislators in recent years, since 2009, to make sure that they leave these funds untouched. And we will continue to do that this May, when we drive down and meet with our legislators. And typically, we have the support of the folks that represent the citizens of LaGrange So I know that we talked about a lot of kind of depressing things. I understand that. But again, it's important that we look at the challenges in our community, so that we are better able to address them. But what I don't want to get lost by anybody in this room, or anybody at home, is the fact that LaGrange Park has a number of very strong strengths, especially when you look at communities all throughout Chicagoland. I think there's over 300 suburban municipalities in Chicago, and every community has their own struggles and challenges, and really, each community's challenges are really no different than the other. I think they're all struggling with how do we fund our aging infrastructure, when the revenues are not increasing at the same rate as the costs that are required to address our capital needs, as well as the operational costs. So I think we're all in the same boat, but yet, we, we have some very strong strengths through it all, and I'd like to make sure that I share those with folks. We are a highly desirable community. That has not changed, not changed at all. We have great parks, we have great schools, and we have great amenities. We have some of the best schools around, really. In 2015, we received a number of recognitions. Movado named LaGrange Park as one of the 10 best Chicago suburbs, recognizing the village's high quality of life, low crime rates, quality educational institutions, and access to amenities. The village was also ranked by Value Penguin as the seventh safest small city in Illinois, eighth safest overall. Safewise ranked us 85th safest community in the United States, 15th in the state. Smart Asset, oh, be tricky, that's a tricky name. Smart Asset, a New York financial technology company, released the rankings from its second annual healthiest housing market study, and for 2016, LaGrange Park made the list at number eight in Illinois, up from its rank of 28 in 2015. The study measures market health by the average number of years that residents spent in their homes, overall home values, ease of sale, and the costs associated with homeownership. And this recognition builds upon our December 2010 designation by Forbes, which identified LaGrange Park as one of America's 20 most stable housing markets, and we were the only community in the state of Illinois to receive this designation. And we were also recognized by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus that we received an environmental achievement award. So even though we have all of these challenges, a lot of great news in 2015. Some other things I wanted to make mention of is that we continue to have record-setting building permits, and residents are investing in our community. Last year was just another high level of, of building permits with regard to renovations and repairs. Our building department is busy. There's a lot going on. We also have a strong record of financial management with a great credit rating. So while we talk about the challenges that we have in not having enough revenue in order to address our infrastructure needs, it's important that folks understand that the funds that we do have, that we're very responsible with. Okay? When we go through a bond refund process, which is what we did for the sewer bond refund, or refinancing, we had to go through a credit rating process, which is not an easy thing to do. It's a very detailed presentation, an inquiry into our financial practices and our financial management practices, the board practices, checks and balances, its ability to be flexible, to be proactive with strategic planning. They looked at everything, Standard and Poor's did. And when all was said and done, we ended up with an increased rating, an improvement from our previous rating, and we're at an AA+. So that's just a notch below the highest rating that's available. When we talked with our financial advisor, they said we were just, what'd they say, Larry? We're just sliver off of, off of the AAA. So we were right there. So that's something that folks can be proud of, to know that the financial management is strong in their municipality. One of the things that I wanted to talk about in terms of a strength is that fin, residents should know that financing a bond through a property tax is really an optimal option. It's an, it's an effective way to finance large infrastructure. The bonds that would be issued if the referenda passed would be payable over 10 years, and then it would come off the tax bill. And when the Village Board was talking about, you know, boy, we have these, these infrastructure needs, we want to get them addressed, the residents have told us this is the most important thing to do, what they really spent a lot of time talking about is what, at what level? You know, at what level catches us up, and at what level keeps us competitive with our surrounding communities? Because what becomes very difficult is when you make the big ask to the residents in the community, and the impacts on the property tax bill are such that folks that live in this town have no advantage over their neighbors, and they're paying a lot more than they otherwise would be paying if they lived in the, in the next town over. So they wanted to maintain that competitive advantage. And again, another strength of bond issuance process to fund infrastructure is that the funds are restricted, and they can only be used as specified in the proposition and in the financial statements for the bond. These are what the questions look like. Has, has everyone seen the wording? Has anyone seen it? Okay. Want to make sure that you've seen that. We've been advertising that. It's up and available on the village's website. This is what it's going to look like on your ballot. By the way, there are copies of this evening's presentation at the table, so you're welcome to take home a copy of this presentation with you. And we'll also post this presentation to the website. So these are the estimated impacts. For a house that has a value of $350,000, the impact on the tax bill will be a little over a dollar a day, $31 a month, $380 a year. We came up with $350,000, because we looked at all the research that was available to us, and it seems to me that that was a common value of homes throughout our community, whether we looked at the census data, or some of the real estate companies' data. So it's $109 per year, per $100,000 of property tax value. So we included another chart, and Larry really did a great job in putting this chart together, because a lot of folks in our community don't really know what their house is valued at, and that's understandable. Oftentimes, you know, what, what Zillow tells you, or the Zestimate tells you your house is worth, and what a Realtor might say your house is worth, and what the county says your house is worth, those are very different things. But a lot of people know what they pay in their property tax each year. So this is a chart that you can use, where you look at your total tax bill. So this wouldn't be the village's portion, and our portion wouldn't, wouldn't be that high, but necessarily, down on the lower numbers. But you look at your total property tax bills, and that's all the taxing districts, the schools, Park District, Library District, County, your total bill, and then you go across, you move across, and depending on what school district you live in, that's what the estimated impact would be for you. I don't know the value of my property. I don't, I don't live in Cook County, but I don't know the property value of my house, but I can tell you what, I know what I pay in property taxes a year. So we're going to spend just a couple of minutes looking at the community needs. We're going to first focus on the roads. We put together a road plan, a $10 million worth of road projects, which would get us to a 35-year replacement schedule. That would be anywhere between nine to 10 miles of roads, or 26% to 27% of our roadways. It would be completed in six years or less. Without the road program, we will get further behind with our current pay-as-you-go program. It's very difficult to prioritize all of our capital needs. And right now, we're going through a process of consolidated dispatch with two other villages, which was initially to, an effort to be able to share in the costs of equipment, and reduce the costs of providing 911 dispatch services. But since we got started in that project, the state has required that all villages that have a population under 25,000, that reside in a county with a population of over 250,000 must consolidate their dispatch centers. So that's new statewide 911 legislation. So we're now required to consolidate our dispatch centers. So we will be doing that over the next year or so, and that has a significant cost. So you've probably seen our map. It's at the front of our room here. This is what it looks like. This is preliminary. This is what we're looking at. Our highest priority street at this point, talking with Brendan, where's Brendan?
Which is Barnstale Road is our highest priority.
So we're looking to attack Barnstale Road in the near future. These are some photographs of our roads. Again, we've taken a photograph of every block of every roadway throughout town that's included in the preliminary plan. These are just some of the pictures that we have. You don't necessarily need to see these photos, because you drive the town all the time. You may even live on some of these streets. So that was the roads. And certainly, if you have any questions, you can ask those. The presentation is almost done. We're going to spend just a minute or two on the fire equipment needs, and we are looking at $1.2 million in fire equipment. And that $1.2 million is broken down to $940,000 for a new ladder truck, $260,000 for a new We'll first look at our ladder truck. It's now 26 years old, and it's at its end of life. Our options are very limited for obtaining this equipment, in terms of financing. Any, any financing that we do will have a significant note, annual note to it, along with probably some not-so-favorable interest rates. Some, some information, in 2015, our fire truck responded to 149 calls for service. The current ladder truck- The current ladder truck that we have does not meet current NFPA standards, which would be the National Fire Protection Association standards, and a ladder truck ensures a stronger ISO rating. And after the presentation, I can have Chief Magus talk a little bit about that. That was a question that was asked at the last session. So here are some photographs of our ladder truck in action. This is a primary piece of equipment that responds to a fire call and is the first one in front of the scene, ready for staging, ready to provide access to a number of pieces of equipment that are stored on the ladder truck. This is, while our ladder truck looks really nice, the reason it looks really nice is because we're responsible for taking care of public equipment. So when our ladder truck rusts, or it gets in poor condition, we make sure that we take it into the shop, and we get it addressed so that it looks nice, and it operates well so that it can respond. But this is the underbelly. So we'll take a minute or two to talk about the ambulance. Our ambulance is about 16 years old. It's at the end of life, and it needs to meet new safety standards. In 2015, we had about 1,700 EMS responses compared to over 1,200 in 2005, so this is a service in our community that is growing. It's steadily moving upwards. 1,700 in 2015, that was our busiest year in the history of LaGrange Park. We have two ambulances, and this is the one that needs to be replaced. Our options, again, are very limited for obtaining this equipment. So talking a little bit more in detail about our ambulance, it was out of service 21 times in 2015. At one point, it was out of service for nine consecutive days. Some of the repairs for 2015 include the door switches, the latches were stuck, the rear door was stuck, various gauges were replaced, we had air conditioning and heating issues, blower control issues, horn problems, and transmission problems. The transmission problems are what took it out of service for nine days, correct, Chief? So that concludes the presentation portion of tonight, and so we'll just wrap it up very quickly in saying that the community will determine its own course for, on these issues, as to whether or not they want a bond issuance to pay for these pieces of equipment and the road program. We have talked about the need that we have here with regard to the financial need, the options that we revisited the process that we used. We will take any questions on that. We're happy to do that, and we have thoroughly considered all of our options over the last few years, and feel that this is the absolute best option to pay for large-scale capital needs for this community. And it's important that you're informed, you have this information. As President DiCipio said, the last thing that we want is when you go into the voter booth to see these two questions on the backside of your ballot and have absolutely no idea what's being asked of you. So that's why we're going throughout the community, providing these presentations, doing the town hall meetings, videotaping the town hall meetings to run on Channel 6 and on YouTube so that folks are informed, and also to be able to take the questions that you have. And so that concludes the presentation portion of the session, and we are happy to take any questions that you have. If anybody's shy about asking any questions, I brought some questions with me.
Do you want to come up to the mic? We can give you something to write on, and we can give you other questions that way, too. So I'll pass on. Art, anyone want to come up?
Sir, if you'd like to come up to the microphone?
If people can hear you from here to there.
But they won't hear you on TV, sir. We have to, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're capturing everything so that, yeah, so that the residents at home can hear us.
We got in this situation, I assume, you're calling it a capital expenditure. It really seems like catch-up maintenance to me, which means that it's coming out of operating funds, and those operating funds has not been sufficient, the revenues haven't been sufficient to keep up with the road repair. If that's the case, in year 11, once this bond issue is paid off, revenues drop back because the bonds have been paid. We're back in the same situation again, potentially worse, because at that point, I assume the state has tried to wiggle its way out, either that we're bankrupt and destitute is immaterial. But if that's the case, I assume you're going to lose some more of your funding from splitting up in the share of the income tax. All of that being said, what is afoot for the next 10 years so that immediately at year 11, we aren't in exactly the same position or worse?
Well, we may be in the same position in the future, because-
Wouldn't that then beg the question of, what are we going to do in the interim to make sure that that doesn't happen? Because borrowing is not the solution. A sinking fund or some other way to save in the process over the 10 years, and allowing for this year 11, when we're going to have to start all over again, or in year 16 or '35, when we're going to start all over year 16, I guess it is for the ambulance, or the ladder truck. It's those issues that I think that hopefully, you know, the officials take account of. I'm in favor of the issue. I think this work needs to be done, but it was, I think, necessary because of the same situation that the state finds itself in, inadequate planning, or putting off the absolute, it's going to happen for the necessity of today.
Well, I can try and address some of your comments. The goal for the village is to not put off infrastructure needs so that future, in the future years, it becomes exponentially more difficult. So perhaps there have been years in the past where the regular paving cycle maybe wasn't as robust as it needed to be. We did a significant infusion of roads back in 2006 as part of a sewer program, but we need to be doing regular maintenance on our roadways on a regular basis to make sure that we're keeping on pace. Now, the issue with the financial sustainability of the budget is one where the costs, our fixed costs, continue to go up. They continue to rise, and the cost of doing things like road projects costs a lot more today than it did 10 years ago and 20 years ago. But the funding structure, such as through motor fuel tax, which is $330,000 we get a year, hasn't changed since, what, Chris? As long as I've been alive, probably. So let's just say a while. Yeah, right, right. So the funding structure for motor fuel tax is the same, while the cost to do streets has gone up exponentially, okay? So the revenue that grows is growing. I want to make sure that people understand. We were proactive in looking at every opportunity that we have to raise revenues, and for a non-home role community, there's not a lot of options, and we're a smaller staff than what we used to be, okay? We're smaller than what we used to be. We're considering, we're going through with consolidation with one of our major operations. We're doing everything that we can do to make sure that we're providing for a more sustainable budget in the future. But the bottom line is, there's not enough revenue coming in to be able to provide the services that are necessary for a bedroom community, because our primary function here is housing where people live, and we don't have a diversified tax base. So what we're doing is, we're being proactive and looking at our commercial sector to make sure that those areas are the best use for how they're being used now, and are there opportunities for redevelopment so we have a chance to maybe either ensure the sustainability of our commercial sector with the retail sales tax, or maybe improve it and grow it some more so that we can get a more balanced revenue base? Because the situation's not going to change. We can continue to do more with less, but it gets to a critical point, okay? And as long as that point is critical, we have some tough decisions to make, and those tough decisions are going to come down to, well, you know, do we continue to cut? We don't have a lot of optional services here. There's leaf pickup, and that's mostly staff time, and it really is not a major change within the Village's budget. We can continue to look at consolidation, but we're starting with a consolidated dispatch center, because that's the one area where we know there's a lot of experience throughout Illinois and throughout the United States, where we can, there's a track record there, and we can learn how to do that pretty easily, but maybe it's an entree or an avenue for other types of emergency services with our neighbors in an effort to save money. We don't know, but we're open, the village board is open to exploring this. But we have to continue to look for ways of growing our revenue base, even though we're so limited in what we can do as a non-home role community. We can't just implement a tax. We don't have the right. We don't have the authority to do it. So we have to look at fines and fees and those ways, and we have to continue to look at ways to make sure that we're providing services in the most cost-effective way, and still doing all of this work with a streamlined staff. So as long as this becomes an issue, we have to continue to go back and evaluate whether the tax base, which hasn't really grown that much, because the CPI hasn't grown that much, because we can only increase the tax base, the tax rate, by what the CPI is, and there really hasn't been much growth, although I heard some good news that they're predicting it might grow by 2%. Did you hear that, Larry? Okay. So there's some good news out there, but our tax rate doesn't grow by much. So we're limited by how much we can grow the tax rate, but I can tell you that the cost of providing services for a village is outpacing the amount of the CPI. So when that happens, we get to a critical juncture where we either need to ask residents, as you saw, we have the lowest tax rate per capita of all of our surrounding communities, either ask them to borrow money to pay for critical infrastructure, or ask them to increase the tax rate, and we've done that recently, and the board didn't want to do that, and I understand why, because it's a really tough, it's a tough thing to say that, to go back and ask for another increase, even if it is rightsizing. It's a very tough ask, and when there's so much riding on it, you know, a bond referenda that is dedicated to the specific, very specific needs in this community is probably the better choice. It's probably the better choice. So we will continue to look at ways where we can raise our revenues and diversify our revenues, and we work on it constantly, and we're going to look at the future development and redevelopment of this village, but it will always continue to be a challenge. But we manage these challenges year by year, and, you know, a lot of times, we budget for a deficit budget, and we end up with, you know, quite the surplus. So we're very good with managing our money. Do you have another question? Hopefully that addresses it a little-
My question is really to the heart of, if you're short of revenue, plus there is a move to raise the ceiling in the county. Limited to get more revenue for the village, you know, from other sources, property taxes. Best, at some point, it needs to be raised. Call the bad news out of the way at once.
Well, the other thing I want to mention, and I'll try and wait until I get to the microphone, is, you know, borrowing money for large capital expenditures is not necessarily a bad thing.
But this is not a capital expenditure.
A car expenditure. A bridge over the harbor belt.
That's different. That's a capital expenditure.
Borrowing money for, to maintain the infrastructure in your community is not, it's very common. A lot of municipalities are doing it. A lot, well, it maintains your credit rating, it makes sure that you're being responsible with your funds, you're going out to the credit agencies on a regular basis, they're testing you, they're looking at you, they're evaluating you, and they're evaluating whether you're a good bet on the market. So borrowing money from time to time, and the Village of LaGrange Park borrows money far less often than a lot of our neighbors or a lot of other communities. We are not a borrowing town. We just don't have a lot of notes over the years. We just don't do it a lot. We're a pay-as-you-go community, but that can get quite constraining when you're not borrowing money to do infrastructure improvements. So a lot of communities are doing it. Brookfield, they're having their town hall meeting tonight on their bond referendum for $22 million in road, in funding for roads. LaGrange recently did a bond referendum for their sewer project. This is not uncommon to do. A lot of communities do that, you know, boy, I bet I can think of more. Villa Park, Glencoe are all recent bond referendas, and these are towns that, in some cases, have really strong credit ratings. So I'll conclude with that. I think the president wants to say something.
I just want to make a comment. Sir, that's a great question and a great process to take. When the board looked at this, we looked at 2005 when we went for a tax increment financing, and, you know, we received some comment on that, well, you know, you said you were going to do this with that and the money, and when the recession hit, as Juliette stated earlier, we were fortunate to have that money available to us as a community so that we could move forward with our services and sustain ourselves. This time around, the village board looked at, you know, what is best for our residents right now? We don't want to tax them and tax them and tax them like what's probably going to happen with the state. We wanted to have a dedicated amount just for our roads, to infuse our road program to get us where we can sustain it at $1 million a year and keep up with the roads. We've just fallen so far behind because of the cost, our winters, everything that goes into this, that we can't catch up. So the idea of the board with the 10-point, we're not asking for $22 million like Brookfield. We want to make it reasonable, but get us caught up so we can sustain the $1 million a year as we go forward.
$1 million hasn't sustained it up till now, and you're falling behind. It won't sustain it in the future.
It may not, it may-
So it's insufficient.
It's a revenue question-
It's a good point.
And how you go about getting revenue is what it is.
In year seven or eight, take a look at it and let everybody rest.
Sure.
It's got to be looked at to avoid this sort of stuff. It reminds me of special assessments in condominiums, which represents, to me, my head management on the board's part. I'm not saying you. This is a very, I'm glad I don't have your responsibility. Look at that and try and work it out so you don't have to come back to these special funds, and this is going to be, the last 10 years is going to look easy compared to the next.
The great thing about a bond referenda is the residents get to choose the course of their future. Borrowing money is not unusual for this reason, and the residents get to decide. There are very few opportunities where residents get to say, this is how, this is what we want to do. I think there's another question.
Yeah, I've been in this village for 58 years, and actually, I would have said, I written down something very similar to what was just commented on, you know, where do we go? We went from zero to a need of $10 million. Seems like there was a, you know, how was this thing created? You're telling me, well, costs have gone up. I understand that to a certain degree, but I question the sustainability. But regarding the fire equipment, my father was on the fire department for a number of years, and if the village was aware, we had a, the truck had a 25-year life, what exactly was the plan for the retirement of this equipment? Kids were born, I started saving for a college education. 18 years came around quickly. I planned and saved accordingly. If the village was a little short on funds, I could understand, but a 100% shortfall, where's the planning? 25 years from now, will I be hearing about the same shortfall? What is the plan for the future?
Well, we can budget $200,000, $250,000, or a half a million dollars a year for the ladder truck. If we do that, we can't do any roads. We can make that plan.
But we knew that 25 years was the life of that truck, or we should have known. What about the life of the other trucks sitting in the garage over here? What's going to happen to those? We're going to be sitting here again? We're going to be sitting here again?
Well.
I mean, we have a sustainability problem. That's, I think, the point there. And I understand, you're looking for other sources of revenues.
We, we could have, we could have chosen something else. The reason why the fire equipment worked is because borrowing, borrowing through a bond issuance is a great option to be able to pay for significant things that you need to buy. And, but in order to borrow, whatever you're borrowing for needs a lifespan that is much longer than the period by which you pay it back. So a ladder truck has a lifespan in this village of 25 years. So borrowing, we can, we can borrow, we can do what a lot of villages do, and we can go to the supplier and say, you know, we want to borrow, we want to buy a ladder truck, and we want to put 250, $300,000 down, and then we want to make payments over a period of years, which is what a lot of villages do, and then we can pay those premium interest rates. We can do that. We still have to pay the note, and if we pay the note, then it's less money that we are going to have to be able to buy other things. So this is an option, again, this is an option. Okay, we're presenting options.
We're still going from zero to 100%, which bothers me.
I understand.
You know, in 58 years living in this village, there was never a road problem. Now we have a road problem. We went from zero to 10 million overnight. Now, do I, do I agree with it? Sure. I mean, I can see the roads. How did it happen? What are we going to do, what are we going to budget next year if we do get this $10 million? What are we going to budget for roads?
If the bond referenda passes.
Is that all we're going to spend? Are we just going to spend what's the referendum, or are we going to have other funds that are going to supplement this?
No, for next year, because what we have to do, because the state law is changing for consolidated dispatch, we have to dedicate funds towards the consolidation of our dispatch center. So we have to get that program up and started.
So you're saying we have no road money?
We have a very small amount. If, you're, we have, we've developed two budgets. The question that you asked is if the bonds pass, correct?
Well, give it to me both ways.
Okay. So if the bonds pass, I think what we are anticipating to spend in roads in the next budget would be $6 million. Larry?
What are we looking for? If the bonds pass, what are we looking to include?
Oh, in the first year with the bonds, we'd probably spend between $2.
Oh, in the first year, $2 and $3 million?
But that's the bond money.
That's with.
But we have two budgets, so I can explain it to you.
No, 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 I want to know, what are we budgeting?
Oh, if the bonds don't pass?
Well, if they do pass, and if they don't pass, are we budgeting any other money? Are we just saying, hey?
We don't have any other money available. Because the amount of money that it takes to do the consolidated dispatch will require that our focus is placed over in consolidated dispatch.
So, so we go from some, some number to zero?
So if we don't do the bonds, do?
With, with the bonds, though, first. She's asking with the bonds.
That's our fund, is because if you have the bonds.
Yeah.
So. That amount that's going to the dispatch instead of the roads?
That, that's a.
How much?
About 350,000.
You're paying to consolidate?
You have to consolidate to start a new center. So all of our equipment in our police department is at the time of its, it needs to be replaced. So we have to consolidate, we have to consolidate by July 2017. That's the law. Okay? So we have to make a decision to consolidate, and we're doing it with two other villages. And not only are we required to consolidate, the consolidated center must provide emergency medical dispatch. So it's a new level of service. So we have to move all of our operations over to another village, so that in the future, all of the costs for the capital of providing dispatch is not placed upon solely the village of LaGrange Park, which is what it is now. It now becomes shared between three communities or more, because they can, we could conceivably take on additional members at the dispatch center. So the, to get back to your question, where did you go, sir? Okay. To answer your question, what, for year one, if the bonds pass, then it allows us to fund the consolidated dispatch center, and it allows us to have a healthy budget. And if the bonds don't pass, then the focus, then the village will be spending money on roads, and it will be spending, and we have budgeted money for Barnsdale Road. That's what we're looking at, if the village board approves the budget. That's subject to them approving the budget. So it would be, I think, two blocks of Barnsdale Road. But this is the situation. We wouldn't be going out to the voters to bring this issue to their attention if it didn't need to be done.
Sounds a little bit like the Illinois State Lottery when they did the education.
Not, not at all. Not at all. We've been responsible in all of our payments. Yeah.
I'm just saying that, you're saying, well, the 350 is going to the dispatch center. It would have gone into the roads perhaps. Now we don't have any road money.
We have to provide dispatch.
It's almost like we have three couches with one coin, and then you sell three couches and we're moving them around.
Every year, every single year, all the funds that we have have to be diverted into a very small set of priorities. It hasn't changed since the day that this village has incorporated. We have a number of priorities. It doesn't matter if it's public works, salting, new trucks, it doesn't matter what it is that we do. The constant challenge for this village is, how do we take, and not just our village, but every village that's out there? And you're welcome, anybody's welcome, bless you, anybody's welcome to come in and take a look at our budget. Our budget's online. Look at our budget, and look at what the funds are that are available to us, and look at the competing needs of this village. But every single year, we have a tough decision to make about how do we spend the precious resources that we have, given that there are so many priorities of this village. Every year, we're making the decision. So whether or not we increase the tax rate to be able to accommodate the amount of, the more funds that are necessary, because we really don't have any other option. We could do that. The only difference is that by having a bond referenda, that additional money, instead of going into an operating fund, it goes to a very specific purpose. That's the only difference.
I'd just like to make one more comment, Julie. This is an investment for us, so we pay on the front end, but over the course of the years, our village will get the benefits of consolidation. And I'm going to, I'm going to make this very basic here. In my household, if I lease a car, I'm not saving for the next car that I get, or if I buy a car, I'm not saving for the next one that I get. When my car gets bad, I look at replacing it. But there's other things that come down the pike, too. I have kids, their education, something happens with the house. All these things are happening within your village, too. And I got to commend our staff and our board for making good decisions. I mean, you see our village, you see the awards we're getting, we're trying our hardest to do what is right. We can't save for everything, we can't save for the future, because the money's not there to save. We want to take care of needs. We do have a good amount of money saved up for security purposes, for tragedies and things like that. But, you know, for us to expect.
We have a fund balance. We made sure that we made our healthy fund balance.
To save for future ladder trucks in the future, I mean, we don't, we don't have the resources to do that. And we are sustaining. We're doing a good job. Yes, Mrs. Erickson?
We have to make sure that we're getting folks on the microphone. Why don't we have the, why don't we have the resident here? Okay.
Our cost for consolidating, this is $350,000.
Oh, it, that's the cost that we have budgeted for the preliminary budget for next year.
Okay. The other villages who are in this group, do they have similar amounts that they have to budget?
Yes. And if we bring in additional communities, then it will end up being less than that.
Proportionate.
It's proportionate, yes.
Okay.
But the future contribution won't be. It'll be based upon calls.
Okay.
Call volume. And we, of the three villages that are consolidating, I believe we have the largest, have the largest EMS volume or fire volume of the three communities, even though we're the middle-sized community.
Okay. But they have to put in also.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And, you know, we've had some great things happen with consolidated dispatch. We're required to consolidate, but, you know, we had this really great thing that, that happened along with it, and we had a company come into town that wanted to have an agreement with us. And a lot of times, when we have utility companies, well, every time we have a utility company come into town that wants to use our infrastructure, there's a cost to utilizing our public right-of-way. So we had a company, Wide Open West, that came to LaGrange and LaGrange Park, and they wanted to put their infrastructure into our right-of-way, and in return for allowing them to use our public right-of-way, they have agreed to run a fiber connection between the three villages, so that we have a way of sharing data between the three police departments. And this was something that we thought that we were going to have to pay for, we were worried about the cost of doing that, and we were able to get this at no cost. So there are good things that happen.
I thought this was done already. The 911 situation, the common call station.
No, it takes some time to implement, to put it all together.
Why?
Because of.
The villages, the villages, the three villages have been talking about it for five years or more. I know that.
Well, we've been talking about it since, I think, the first discussions happened, the first study that we did, we got a grant for the first study in 2009. It does take time to consolidate. There are a number of things to factor.
Ah.
Takes time.
No.
Well, this is more an observation, but seems, reading what's going on in the markets today, the village, I believe you mentioned, has a AA+ bond rating, and watching what's going on in the city of Chicago and around, it would seem to me that going out for bonds now, with the interest rates being low and the good bond rating, is actually a much better idea than waiting with a fluctuating market and trying to go out maybe five years from now and facing higher interest rates and that sort of thing, and therefore, much higher tax rates. And the other thing is that something I do more, much more about, is vehicle maintenance. And the fact that the village has been able to get 26 years out of a fire truck and 16 years out of an ambulance speaks very highly for the people who maintain them. A lot of people don't even get that kind of life out of their automobiles. Personally, we happen to have gotten that kind of life out of most of our cars. So I'd just like to point that out, that I give the vehicle maintenance people a lot of credit for that.
Well, thank you very much. I would agree with that. I think they do a great job. We have an in-house mechanic. Also, we have a great, with regard to the fire department and the large pieces of equipment, listen, our paid-on-call firefighters, the fire chief, they're very keen on the upkeep of this equipment. It's very important to them, and they understand that it's public equipment. They understand the responsibility of that. We really try to get the most out of every piece of equipment that we have. I think, Brendan, we have a truck in the public works department that we use regularly. That's how old? We have a pickup truck?
Twenty years old.
Twenty years old. You know, listen, we're, we're not out asking for things that we want. We, we make the most out of everything that we have. And by and large, let's not forget, by and large, what we purchase is pay-as-you-go. We're not borrowing a lot of money, and we have a lot of equipment, and we have a lot of things that we get done. And we improved our public works facility, in part by grants. We're able to keep up this building and a lot of the things that we do. We have a new generator going in the back here, in part by a grant, $150,000 grant that we were able to obtain. And we do a lot, as pay-as-you-go, but we make the most out of every piece of equipment that we have, and we keep it up very well. And that includes our police squad cars. We make sure that we get a lot more mileage than a lot of other communities get out of them. And they're running all the time. They're constantly out there. They're, they're not parked in a garage for long periods of time. I have another question here. Hello?
I have a few questions. I understand that there's a need for repaving the roads. My questions, I guess, in part, hopefully you'll.
Okay.
But they are more in the aspect, if you do get the money, how are we going to be ensured that you're going to spend it wisely? First, to take a step back, what methodology was used to inspect the roads and classify it into poor, fair, average, good, and excellent?
Brendan, would you like to come up and answer these questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Because, because you, yeah, so we had a little bit of time to consider those questions. So Brendan has put together responses for all those. So I'm going to give the full breadth of work on it.
You sent the email earlier today with the questions?
I did.
Okay. Nice to meet you, Mason.
Hi.
So the methodology that we use to assess the streets in LaGrange Park was a drive, a drive onsite inspection with the village engineer, myself. It was done using general observations, some professional judgment, determining the extent that the pavement could accept any further patching or other maintenance options. What we did not do is we did not go out and hire a separate engineering firm to prepare a 60-page report that tells us pretty much what we already know, the streets are in failing condition. And so, you know, you can use a pavement condition index, which is what the professional engineering standard is, to go out there. We chose not to do it because I just didn't want to spend the money. I'd rather use it somewhere else in the budget.
Okay. What is the remaining service life for each category for poor, fair, average, good, excellent, and concrete?
Sure. For service life, and there's really two sets of service life. There's one that would be like a professional engineering standard or an international standard for how long a road should last, and then we use the LaGrange Park standard, which is a whole lot longer than, than what the national standards might be. So when you look at the ones that are rated poor, I would say that their service life is a negative five years. You know, they should have been resurfaced five years ago. So if it's a fair street, I would say we could probably realistically get zero to five more years out of it, and that's doing a lot of patching and potholeing and kind of threading things along like we've been doing the last few years. We've really put a lot of emphasis on getting out there and trying to keep the streets in the condition that they, they can stay in. I don't know if you've noticed, some streets that we've run, especially Barnsdale's one on the 7800 block, we're to the point that we can't send a pothole crew out to try to address it. All we can do is put a skim coat over the top of it. It's not the way that we would like as professionals to repair a road, but frankly, there's nothing left to patch, too. You know, when you go along the curb line, the amount of water that's in the freeze-thaw cycle, there's not a whole lot there, but we're trying to keep the road passable for, especially by the school, for the buses and everything else. And so that's why you see it, you know, in that condition. For the average streets, and talking with the village engineer, we'd take, you know, probably 10 to 15 years for the average streets. And that assumes that we're, with the bond referendum, we have money for maintenance, which in prior years, we've kind of diverted some of the maintenance money to try to extend one more block of pavement, resurfacing. For good streets, we're looking at 15 to 20 years, and, you know, the excellent streets, we're looking at 25 years at plus.
What is the expected design life of, or service life of a concrete?
Concrete streets, they'll tell you it can last from 50 to 70 years. We've extended our concrete streets far longer than that.
What is the cost difference between a concrete and an asphalt roof?
An asphalt street?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You know.
We knew what you meant.
Streets.
What we're looking at doing in our, in our referendum program is simply a mill-and-overlay solution. There's some spot curb being done where the engineering needs to occur to make a drain, which is very different than a full-depth concrete street reconstruction. And so it's like comparing a cherry and a watermelon. So, you know, I would say the price of concrete runs, I'd say at least seven times greater than trying to mill and overlay a street if you want to reconstruct in concrete, at least seven or eight times greater.
If a concrete has a design life of 50 to 70 years, and an asphalt has a design life of 25 to 30 years? Has there been a lifecycle cost analysis done with both types of streets to find out what is the most cost-effective means?
Do you want to come up?
Do you want to come up?
Yeah.
As Brendan's, now, let me re-
Yeah, let's, let's get you on our, on the microphone.
As Brendan identified, we're not doing either. We're not doing a complete reconstruct using concrete or a complete construct using asphalt. Neither option is on the table under this scenario. The, the reason behind that is we're trying to have the dollars go as far as they can. So, we're doing just a milling or a grinding operation with, uh, an inch and a half or a two-inch overlay of asphalt over that.
What's the expected service life of that type of overlay, though?
Fifteen to twenty years.
So, the streets that we're doing-
Twenty-five in La Grange Park.
But the streets that we're doing now could possibly be back to being poor and fair in fifteen years?
I, in a longer period than that, but they will need to have maintenance, uh, regular maintenance done to them to, uh, keep their condition rating high. But, uh, ultimately, yes, just like every other asphalt surface, you would mill it and re-overlay it, take a number, twenty or twenty-five years.
So, has there been a lifecycle cost analysis for those three options?
There has not because the initial cost is too high to allow us to reconstruct at this point. If we were going to reconstruct it in asphalt or reconstruct it in concrete, the amount of roadwork that could be done with the ten million dollars i- is between a tenth and a seventh of what we would be able to do. So, we're concentrating on just trying to extend the serviceability of the pavements that we have by doing a mill and overlay.
Don't you think it would be a better, um, supporting documentation to the taxpayers to provide that information so we are making an educated decision about how you're using our money if it, if it is approved?
No. I, I think it would be an idle exercise because I don't think the, um, costs would be just prohibitive and it would-
The cost to do the analysis?
No, the cost to actually do a concrete reconstruct, the cost to do an actual asphalt reconstruct throughout the village is just, is just prohibitive at this point.
But the cost to perform the analysis is not prohibitive?
I, I don't think the analysis would yield any additional information that would be of value to the village personally.
Or to the taxpayers?
Well, being the village. The taxpayers are the village.
How much is spent each year in these temporary repairs that you're doing?
Uh, we budget about twenty thousand dollars a year for materials to do, uh, the patching. Uh, the labor on that is the labor that's already here. So, you know, what portion of our time is spent on patching, might be ten percent of the overall labor time.
And how often are you patching the same streets over and over again?
Uh, we run, uh, every street, uh, at least twice a year to look for potholes and that thing, you know, if they, some streets take a bit, uh, more traffic and so you'll get more potholes versus some of the side streets that don't get as much, but we try to look at every street at least twice a year.
Why do some concrete, or why do some streets, why are they made of concrete and some of asphalt?
Um, well, some of the existing streets are concrete because in the nineteen twenties, when they were installed, that's what the developer put in, like-
So, we still have concrete streets that have not been replaced since it was initially installed?
Correct.
And what are the maintenance costs associated with those streets?
Um, it can vary. There, there has been ongoing maintenance. The thing that usually goes wrong with those concrete streets such as, um, Wyola Springstone is utility patches where people put in new sewer lines or something like that. So, over the years, minor amounts of concrete patching have been performed on those streets.
Would that be information that would be included in a cost analysis and a lifecycle analysis?
Well, I think maintenance is always part of an ongoing operation for the village.
So, your answer is it varies?
It varies. The last concrete pavements that were put in the village were on, on Beach Avenue. They were put in-
Can you at least say it's significantly less than an asphalt street?
Um, maintenance operations?
Yes.
Over time, yes. Not, not, if you take it year by year, the answer would be no, but if you go over a lifecycle of a pure pavement, it would be less.
Uh, maybe it would be, the last time we, um, did concrete streets was, uh, two thousand nine through two thousand eleven.
Right.
Um, and, and at the time, there were a couple of things going on. Uh, first of all, we were looking at Beach, which was a highly traveled road, um, and concrete's very good for roads that are highly traveled, uh, rather than residential. Residential, uh, I know that the concrete companies will tell you that, uh, concrete's very quiet. Quiet in a residential neighborhood, they can, when a car trot travels down a concrete road, you hear cucko, 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 because there's seams that have to occur every few feet. But when we were looking at Beach Avenue, we, we, um, went out to bid for Beach Avenue, we had an alternate bid for concrete, and there were a couple of things that were going on that were very unusual at the time, uh, with regard to the materials market. One was the price of, uh, of oil and asphalt was on the incline. Uh, I don't, I couldn't tell you where it was on the, on the, you know, mountain or on the hill, but it was on the upward.
It is now.
It was much higher than it was now, but it was on the incline. But, um, but because the period of time that we went out to bid for Beach was after the recession, there was no building that was going on and the cost of concrete was very low. Um, so, um, the differential between the cost of doing an asphalt, uh, reconstruction and a concrete reconstruction, um, for that period of, of couple of years, um, the cost differential just wasn't that great. And when you considered the benefits of the extended life in a concrete street and then you also considered the, the traffic that would occur on Beach, it just made sense, uh, in that case, uh, to choose concrete. And those are decisions that we look at. Right now, concrete is high in demand. The market conditions are very different today than they were, uh, post-recession. Concrete is high in demand, the cost of concrete is very expensive, and the cost of, of oil, uh, by the barrel is very low. Uh, so, I anticipate that that gap, that, that differential cost, uh, between the two materials in terms of reconstruction, because a lot of, because if any of these roadways were to be done in a, in, with concrete, it would ha- you, you can't do a concrete layer. You know, you can't do that. Concrete doesn't work that way. You have to go back, you, you have to dig down deep.
After seventy years?
Uh, well, some, you know, for these roads, um, you would have to do a concrete reconstruction, which means that the cost of doing that street in concrete is exponentially higher than it would be in doing an asphalt overlay.
At initial cost, but not the lifecycle cost, because we don't know those big costs.
It's, listen, it's-
The, the cost to do an asphalt reconstruction and the cost to do a concrete reconstruction are both very high. Concrete reconstruction would be slightly higher than the asphalt reconstruction just based on, on all the numbers that we received on Beach and that we see in other markets. But none of the streets that are being discussed tonight are being contemplated for reconstruction. The, the circumstances don't warrant it, there's not sufficient value in it to the village to reconstruct at this time. There, there's a lot of road that needs to be looked at. Um, the, the Beach circumstances that created the need to reconstruct it were unique. We don't really have those on these other streets. Not like the analysis, um, this wouldn't lead you to any additional information that would be of value to the village to decide how to go forward because trucks are not part of our conversation.
But it is justifying costs, I would think.
Concrete's a great option.
Yeah, but it would at least justify cost if you give design life, anticipated service life, anticipated maintenance cost. So, at least when we're going back to ten years down the road, we have an idea of-
But instead of asking for ten million to do the roads that have been identified, you'd be asking for seventy million.
Yeah. It'd be, it, it's very expensive.
It just doesn't make sense.
And the communities that typically did concrete reconstruction, very difficult for them to consider that anymore.
Part of which street was done when? How old each street is?
Yeah, but you have to define that a little tighter because-
And the nomenclature of the church, or the, the nomenclature of the streets, the age of the streets?
Various age of the streets varies depending on when portions of it went was last patched, when, when it had an overlay done, when it was put on initially, when the streets were constructed originally. I mean, there, there's a multi-tiered question that doesn't really have a simple answer, but I'd be happy to meet with you individually if you have specifics that I could answer.
One last question. Sorry about that.
She's not even on the mic.
We're, we're getting a phone mic. You have a television.
We're, yeah, we're, what we're trying to do is make sure that we have an organized communication. Okay, well, we can come back to you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, but I want to sit down because I'm not sure that my knees will hold me up standing still.
That's okay.
I'm a little bit disappointed to not seeing a photograph of Jackson or Brainerd avenues up here, although I know they're on a high priority for rework. I'm also pleased to see this other cha- this change in-
Mr. Whitey, I, I just want to be polite. Speak into the mic because nobody will hear you on TV.
Okay.
Just waving it around though. It's like an ice cream cone.
Okay. I, I don't have the shakes yet.
That's fair.
Uh, then I was disappointed that, uh, the, there are no photographs of Jackson or Brainerd here because I think those streets really are badly in need and they are, they have a high priory, they have a high priority for repair. Uh, I'm glad to see that you've changed the expression of cost to comparison of the, the taxes, tax incre- increase, uh, because I still believe the taxes, the tax increase may be, uh, understated. I, uh, I did a little bit of looking at the budget. I see them fourteen, fifteen, uh, the tax we received is, on the budget, tax received is something like five million dollars, uh, state, I don't, well, that's what's, that's what's shown on the, on the budget, that's on the internet, five million dollars received. Now, if we take the, uh, if we pay only two percent interest on this bond issue and set aside a million dollars each year towards a retirement of the principal after ten years, then those costs are twenty-seven percent of that five million dollars. I, uh, so, now, there may, there's patent, I don't know the discrepancy between the numbers, but it seems to be quite high. Um, also, on the, on the condition of the streets, I noticed that the damage, the deterioration of the streets seems to start at the, at the center of the street, at the crest, and also where individual driveways under the street. And I wonder if there are any change in technique that can extend the life of the-
Seems that the top of the street will come apart over time and in the past, the funds were not there or the priority was not there to crack seal those areas and then also along the curb lines. Uh, and so, that would be a normal practice that we would be doing going into the future is making sure we do get those, uh, crack, cracks filled. Probably around year five or so, uh, after a street is in, is generally when you start to see some of that showing up and it, uh, if you, if you seal a street up, uh, you could really extend the useful life. We did that a lot when I was in Naperville and we were able to, uh, stay on top of, uh, our roads to make them last, uh, even longer.
There was extensive sealing of woodlawn several years ago and, uh, actually, the specifications at that time called for resealing every year. But I, I don't see that, uh, woodlawn has stood up any better than, uh, other streets because of that sealing.
You know, I wasn't here at the time to see what the prior condition was or how long they let it go before they put some of that sealant on or who, which if it was done in-house or if they had an outside firm do it, and that can make a difference, too. Uh, it's, uh, it is a specialty, uh, not that you need to be highly skilled, but the equipment that you use and how you go about it and inspect it, uh, can make a difference in how long it lasts.
Regarding your budget, regarding your budget question, we can meet with you individually afterwards so that we can-
Okay, well, you can go on the internet and look at the budget.
Well, we just want to be, be able to better understand what your, what your decision-
There must be some income that is not included in that figure that I looked at, but-
Yeah. Yeah, we can look at it. I'm not sure I know exactly what you're talking about, but we can look at it.
Okay. Uh, now, isn't it about time for us to talk about increasing the sales tax, the village component of the sale tax by another one percent?
Well, uh, increasing the village's, uh, local sales tax requires that we go out for a referendum.
We've got a referendum coming up.
Right.
I've asked the same question many, many times.
Right.
And if it is, was to be considered, it should have been considered before this time.
Well, La Grange, La Grange Park's sales tax base is a little bit different than, um, a lot of communities. Uh, that makes, um, a one percent sales tax increase, um, not as attractive. Uh, I, I think that there is potential for it, but, uh, a local sales tax is only applicable to, uh, goods and not, it, it can't include food and it can't include drugs. Um, our greatest, um, sales tax remitter is Juul. So, um, the greatest, and, and prior to this year, we had zero sales tax information on, on any of the businesses in our community. We don't, we didn't have, prior to January of two thousand fifteen, we had zero ability to see what anybody was paying. So, for us to make even an accurate assessment of what that might look like, um, which would be, not be favorable to the, to the business community, uh, but we kind of knew it wouldn't bring about a lot of revenue, um, but now we can see a little bit better. So, um, uh, it probably raising it one percent, uh, I think we did some rough numbers. What did we anticipate the additional revenue would be a year?
Likely under three hundred thousand.
Likely well under three, no, well under three hundred thousand for one percent?
No, the one for, the one percent, the last time we looked at the SIC report was running in the neighborhood of a hundred, uh, four hundred thousand. That's not the most recent information.
So, a one percent sale, local sales tax would make the total, what, eight point, that would, that would be, that would be the total sales tax of what now?
The five hundred thousand that we get now is our one percent share, so assuming it's a ninety percent, it would be-
Which is high.
It would be at least-
La Grange has had a higher, the additional percentage of a tax for many years already. We wouldn't be putting ourselves at any disadvantage compared to that, and I don't think a one percent increase would influence any buying and, any buying decisions.
Yeah, I don't think they're a full percent more. I don't think, I don't think they're a full percent more. We continue to look at it. It is something that we have looked at in the past and what, now we have the data to be able to evaluate it. Uh, we can certainly, uh, continue to evaluate that.
Okay. Uh, so, the SIC classifications have been inadequate in the past?
Well, sure. I mean, you know-
No, the never, data is never perfect.
Well-
As you have to do the best with what's available.
It's exact now.
A bet.
It's exact now. So, we have the data to be able to evaluate it and with the recent changes that the Cook County has made with the sales, with the, with the sales tax increases, it makes it more difficult to do when you have very few businesses in town and you're trying to be somewhat competitive in the area. And, um, and that's always a challenge as well, but we don't-
To cross the tracks and the, or drive, uh, seven miles, whatever, to save one percent is not an economical decision by, for a buyer to make.
Well, we will continue to evaluate that. We have the, we almost have a, a year's worth of data, not quite, uh, we have a, two-thirds, two-thirds of data, so we're in a better position to be able to evaluate the impact. So, I think we have a couple of folks waiting for questions.
Okay, well, go, go back then. Here you are, Rob.
Thank you, Fred. I have about three questions, if that's okay, about the referendum. I was looking at the frequently asked questions and it talked about real estate taxes being lower, I believe. So, would it be correct to assume that since this additional cost for the referendum would be on our real estate taxes, that that basically is deductible on our income taxes at the end of the year, then?
Well, um, if you go to the IRS's website, okay, you'll see that there are a list of eligible deductions on your, on your income tax filing, but you have to file itemized deductions. You can't do an easy form or anything like that.
Okay.
So, um, if you do itemized tax deductions, um, one of the eligible deductions is your local property tax, but it's really- tax, but it's really individually based, okay? So it's situational entirely upon the, the tax filer. So it really depends on what their personal circumstances are.
For typical homeowner that.
So I can't, we can't make a generalization, say, you know.
For most homeowners, it would probably be the case then.
Well, if you're currently getting a deduction, so if you're currently receiving a deduction on your income tax because of your property tax that's being paid and that's currently the status, all things being equal, all things staying the same, that will be increased, what that deduction is.
Okay. The other thing I was looking at is the ISO rating regarding the fire truck and the ambulance. I was hoping maybe an explanation could be done with the ISO rating, what it is and how it affects our insurance rates, whether it be for the village or is it for homeowners. Maybe a brief explanation on that would be helpful.
Sure, we can provide a brief explanation. This question has come up before at our first town hall meeting. This was a question that was asked and we responded to the group that was there. So we're glad to respond to that. So I will turn it over to the fire chief.
I'll try and keep it brief. The ISO rating is what they call is the public protection classification or something similar, the PPC rating that the village gets from ISO. Many insurance companies, although not all of them use it, but it does, it is the way that ISO, which I think originally stood for insurance services organization, rates the village in regards to fire protection. And they rate you on your water system, your communication center, and then your actual ability for fire protection. And there is, I brought it just in case tonight, but we get a report when that's done and then there's a whole grading scale. It's pretty in-depth. What was talked about in some of the frequently asked questions and the concern with the ISO rating, we recently got it reevaluated in, I think, two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve, and we went from a five to a three. The lower number is better. For those companies that use the ISO rating, the lower the number, the better off your premium is. Now, for residential occupancies or individual homeowners, some companies that do use ISO may give you a scale, like one to three, your rate is so much, four to six. Other companies may be one to four and five to 10 or somewhere in between there. There are some companies that don't use it, but a lot of them still do. So they, that's what your, your rating's based on. As part of that rating in relation to the ladder truck, your rating is based on a hundred points. Couple of things come into play. Do you, do you have enough buildings in your town of a certain height that require you to have a ladder truck? Is the ladder truck within two and a half miles of all of your protected properties? Does the ladder truck carry their required equipment? They have a list of equipment, minimal equipment. And so all of that goes into your rating, along with some other things. Basically, looking at ours to kind of, to, to make it a little brief, even though it's not brief, we got five out of five points for having a ladder truck and we had four out of four points for having our ladder truck and pumpers in the right location. Pumpers have to be a mile and a half distance from your protected properties. So our ISO rating this year is a benefit to those who use it. You know, overall, in general, if you have a better ISO rating or a lower ISO rating, most people will see some type of savings, but I can't sit here and tell you how much it is. For our commercial properties, it's a little different than what I previously said. My understanding through the insurance companies is commercial properties, the way they use the ISO rating, is there can be a significant or some savings for every level. So if, you know, if we went from a three to a four, or three to a two, it may not be in this range for residential properties, like one to three or one to four or five. So we got, again, five out of five points, four out of four points for location, five out of five for having the ladder truck. We were at just over a seventy score, which put us in the ISO three, which is the best we've ever attained. Previously, we were in ISO five, so we, we improved our rating by two numbers. If we lose, and this is just my own calculations because it's a very complex formula they use, if we lose, if we don't replace the ladder truck and at some point we can no longer use our current one, we'd probably lose the five points because we actually, we've done all sorts of mapping on where our neighbors' ladder trucks would be if, you know, if they had them, not all of them have them. If we didn't have one, we would probably lose at least the five points, probably one out of the four points. So that would put us at least at, all things being equal, at least at a four, but it depends how everything else is. So in general, the way even ISO says and the insurance companies in general, I can't be specific, if you have a better ISO rating or a lower ISO rating, like I said, in general, you can expect a little bit of better insurance saving.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yes. Yes. So basically, it's a benefit, the better, the better the rating, the better it is for residents and for the village then.
The residents and/or the businesses. You know, we, we were getting a lot of calls, you know, what is your ISO rating from insurance companies that rate businesses?
Okay. While you're up here, one more question then. I know we're getting, you know, planning and getting a new ambulance if the referendum passes, and what would the new features or benefits, I mean, I know it's sixteen years old, things have changed in sixteen years and everything, but what are the, some of the benefits that would come with a new ambulance as far as features for patients or whatever? I hope I don't need it for a while, but it may be.
No, sure. Um, yeah, and we touched on some of these in the past. The current ambulance is sixteen years old. Our goal was to keep, you know, that ambulance in, you know, we, we rotate our ambulances, but to not let it get, you know, we wanted to replace an ambulance every eight years. The last ambulance, we could not afford to replace until we got a state loan, a no-interest loan. So that went two years beyond, so, so each ambulance has seen more service over the years, the longer we keep it than we had planned. So, so we're sixteen years old with our current ambulance, which is as far as we ever wanted to get. A lot of things have changed. In regards to the ambulance, the designs could be the same, you know, looking at them, but there's been a lot of changes as far as the specs that ambulances are built to. One of them is patient restraint. How do, how is the cot secured in the ambulance, you know, if you suffer a vehicle crash? And the standards have changed. The emergency lighting package, your visibility, you'll see our newer ambulance and fire trucks, they all have Chevrons on the back. There, there's changes in the law that required Chevrons. They're not law, but standards. The interior is designed structurally different, or the body's designed somewhat structurally different, the more they've researched that. But the interior, there, there are some of the companies, and again, the specific changes will be based either on the standards or our particular vehicle we purchased, but a lot of the padding and components inside the ambulance, rounded corners, the actual pads are made of different foam to be more absorbing if, if, if the firefighters or patients are in a vehicle crash. Obviously, regardless of crashes, the emission standards have changed in sixteen years, so the emissions are much better for the environment. Fuel efficiency, there's a lot of safety things that are not maybe code required, but are options, so whether we get those or not, such as airbags inside the patient compartment. So if the ambulance gets hit or rolled over, there's airbags that can protect the firefighters. A lot of things, again, a lot of them are standards that have improved and just the availability of some additional features. So those are some of the things that, that have changed or that are, are going to be vastly improved. Safety will be key.
Okay. Thank you very much.
At the last meeting night, I had come up and asked the questions about sust, sustainability in revenue, specifically with the commercial properties. I realize we're a bedroom community and, you know, we're very limited on what those options might be as far as square footage and properties and stuff like that. I guess, from what I remember, the TIF district was, was more focused on the Thirty-First Avenue Business District. I was curious more about the LaGrange Road, the limited, limited space we have here where the old Pancake House was and, and, and the Panera Mall there also, I forget what it's called, but from my understanding, I guess it's all one, one owner that owns a lot of that property and they're out of state, you know, so, I mean, some of the questions, some of my neighbors had that we discussed during the Super Bowl, actually. It, you know, is there a way that we can pressure these absentee landlords about the properties on, on LaGrange Road? You know, I mean, threaten eminent, eminent domain proceedings possibly? You know, you know, it, it doesn't seem like they're invested in the well-being of the, of the community. Too many businesses come and go, you know, what else can we do about bringing in more anchor, anchor stores and brands and commercial, commercial properties to help, help revitalize the area and bring in more, more, more revenue? I know it's a minor portion, you know, a little bit helps on, obviously, but, you know, maybe rather than having to increase anything to maybe drive people away, maybe we can bring in more, more business. I mean, what is the village plan or what's the plans to talk to these real estate developers about moving forward with other, other ideas? That's, that, that was my comment and question, I guess.
I think those are all great, great questions. I can provide you with some updates and others might have to wait a little bit, and that's because we're in the middle of a study. And as far as we've gotten with the study is that, you know, this is, you know, what is it called when you tell the secrets about how a show turns out? Spoiler alert. Spoiler alert is that we are working with a consulting firm called SB Friedman. They're an excellent firm. And as far as we've gotten at looking at all of the commercial areas, they've determined that as far as, they've looked at the state law and they've been out and done their field work and they've run, they've looked at everything, they've taken the photographs, they, you know, they see them, all of the areas as being TIF-able, if that's a word, TIF-able. So, but there's a lot of work left to do. You know, we have to take all of the sales tax data and all the financial data and they have to run that, and then they have to integrate it into the report and then they have to provide that report to the board. So when they provide that report to the board, I anticipate that that will be at a village board meeting and I anticipate that that will be a televised meeting. So it won't just be the board that sees the results of the study, but when we run it on, on TV, you'll be able to see what it says. There really was no one single or, or, you know, preferred focus of the TIF study. It looks at all the commercial areas throughout town. It looks at the village market. It looks at LaGrange Road and Thirty-First Street. It looks at an area that we're calling Central Thirty-First Street. It's looking at the Maple Avenue Thirty-First Street and it looks at the Light Industrial Park that's on North Burnsdale Road. So it looks at all of the areas and we really didn't know what to think. That's why we went through this process because while we think, you know, the village market looks pretty good for a TIF, it's ripe for a TIF, you know, based upon what we observe and what we know, you know, it really takes somebody with a good deal of expertise in, in tax increment financing districts to be able to evaluate and that's what they've done. But there's no one area that we're looking at. I think that the village market looks very promising, probably one of the more promising areas and, and really that's because of its position on LaGrange Road and, and the way that the parcels, the dimensions of the parcels and the opportunities that exist with the, with properties of that dimension. There's just a lot more than the smaller properties that don't have a lot of depth with them on Thirty-First Street. It's a little bit more challenging, okay? More spoiler alerts. But, so village market looks pretty good. So how do you put pressure on an out-of-state real estate owner? So we've always been in contact, or at least in the last five years, the village president has been in contact with the company, the organization that owns the seven parcels that make up the village market, which include Loyola, the two strip malls, Fifth Third Bank, Juul, Pancake House and Phillips Flowers. And what else am I missing? Am I missing something? It's just about everything, right? Juul? I caught everything. Okay. So there's seven parcels there and we have communicated our frustration with, you know, whether it's the condition of the property or the Pancake House site being vacant. You know, we think great things about that piece of property and, and we would like something to happen there. We, you know, it's, listen, there's twenty-four, twenty-five thousand cars go by that site on a twenty-four hour basis. I mean, it gets a lot of traffic. But the Pancake House site is small. It is challenged in that way when you think about some of the, you know, minimum parking and, and space needs for some of the commercial uses that are out there, but that's not to say it's still not a good piece of property. But we have been in communication with the owner. We have expressed, you know, our desires about, you know, what could happen with the property. That has happened, but at the end of the day, they are the owners of the property. They're going to do with, do with it what they want to do and the property is very valuable to them. I mean, it has a strong return on investment, even though a lot of people think that there's a lot of vacancies there. It's been a very successful property. You know, the vacancy rate is low, is relatively low by market standards and it does well. Does it have premium retailers? Well, it's got a couple. It's got Juul, it's got Fifth Third and Rootful Yield, and then we have the Dinner Club coming in and we hope to continue to get those spaces filled up. But, you know, eminent domain condemnation, I mean, that's some serious talk and, you know, you can't, eminent domain or condemnation doesn't mean you just, you get to go tell somebody, "I'm taking your property." You know, you can't, it means that you're going to go through a legal lawsuit to take somebody's property and you're going to get a market rate on what that property is worth and you're going to pay for it. So it, it, you know, I, I know people talk about condemnation or eminent domain, but you still have to pay for it. And we're talking tonight about eleven point two million dollars in, in capital needs and I have no idea what that property's worth, but I'll take a guess that it's worth more than eleven point two million dollars. And we would have to have a way to be able to fund those, those dollars to be able to, you know, take that property, not to mention that a lawsuit of condemnation is a very expensive endeavor to take on. The attorney's fees are very pricey. So what we have chosen to do is to do the TIF feasibility study. So we don't have much control over what happens. We can persuade, we can be frustrated, we can, you know, we can get the residents excited about, you know, the possibility of change or the best use of the property. And really that's, you know, as village officials, our responsibility is, you know, trying to figure out and doing whatever we can to get the best use out of property. I mean, that's kind of the planning philosophy, right? So, and that's, you know, what we're looking at with the TIF feasibility study. And really what a village can do is somewhat limited and, but one of the options that fortunately we do have is it, is a tax increment financing tool. And that offers an opportunity, if we choose it, if it makes sense, if it's viable, if it's, if it's going to build an increment to be able to incentivize vibrant, you know, redevelopment for vibrancy or redevelopment of public spaces, approximate or right next to an area in order to create a sense of vibrancy so that people want to come into your community. And what a tax increment financing tool does is it's a, it's a, you know, a process by which, you know, you, you select your boundaries and you put into place a TIF district and the TIF district requires that, you know, you, you freeze the tax base, whatever that tax payment is for that particular year, for a period of twenty-three years. And then the increment that would grow with the growth of the EAV over that period of twenty-three years, that, that increment or that gap, that those monies, instead of those monies being paid out to the various taxing districts, it gets set aside into a very particular fund and those funds can be used in order to incentivize very specific plans for the redevelopment or enhancements to that particular area. But it has to be specific and it has to meet all the state requirements with the law and you don't get to be willy-nilly about it and you have to have a good plan. So the village of LaGrange Park has never had a TIF district. This is very new to us, but we are looking at it and we anticipate the results will be out in March or April at a public meeting and certainly you're all welcome to be there, but it probably will be televised. That would be what. will be televised. That would be what I would anticipate. But it, great question.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
We have, you know, as Julia stated, one of our, our tools is a TIF financing district. That, that's where we're at now. Through my past 10 years in office, we've made contact with Woodman of the World, who owns the property there in Omaha, Nebraska. We've talked with the person in charge out there. There is a local representative here who's been in charge of the property for 20 years, 25 years, has been. There is a local rep, and there's been some, some things going on there. We've had culvers come out, look at the property. We can't certainly do it. We have to suggest to the owners that this person's looking in his interest in the property. We've had culvers look out. The problem with the property is that today's establishments require ingress and egress and, and traffic volume. And to get in and out of that site and go south on LaGrange Road is almost impossible during rush hour. So they look at that. It would be a nice establishment for a nice restaurant, to put a balcony out, to look over the park. We've looked at that. So we have to, we have to try and get somebody that, that is interested in it in there. It has been my Achilles' heel for the last 10 years. And we're just frustrated because we can't get any movement on, on the corporate end of it. But we're trying, and we're trying to look out. We have one of our, on our zoning board, we have Anthony Griffin, who's in charge of the Berwin Development Corporation, who's very involved in redeveloping Berwin. And he's on our board, and he's helped us out in making contact with various establishments to see if they'd be interested. When Mariano's opened up, I met the director that is in charge of that whole facility. He came out to us and talked to us, and gave us some suggestions what we can do, and we're out there. So we're trying really hard. If we own the property, we'd be going for a $30 million referendum right now, but we don't. So, you know, we're, we're trying our best. Thank you.
I have one question, and that would be, I thought that back in the paperwork there somewhere, that it said at, this would be a 10-year bond, payable in 10 years. And at the end of the 10 years, when it's paid off, did you say that then the taxes would be lowered by the amount of money that would be, be putting in place to pay this bond?
I'm going to, I can answer that, but I'm going to let a little bit of the spotlight shine on our finance director, because I don't think anybody does it better. So Larry, if you wouldn't mind coming up here and answering the question about the bond issuance and how that goes on the property tax bill when it comes off?
Okay. Yes.
Curiously.
Yes, so.
That's the answer to the question.
The bonds go on as a addition to the tax, and when they're paid off, those taxes go away.
Oh, okay. So then, at that point, if anything, if money was needed for any other issue, then right out of the gate, you guys would just go back to the taxpayers and offer, have to ask for more, and then that one would have to be voted on. So what we're talking about right now is just the 10-year commitment?
Correct.
And at the end of 10 years?
At 10 years, there's, the options are all on the table again.
Well, I, for one, I'm all for it. I will vote yes. The town beats it. Because I chose LaGrange Park, and by that meaning, when I went to buy my home, I drove through Westchester, Western Springs, LaGrange. I went through this entire community area. Something kept bringing me back here and here. And I literally, when my mother was still alive, her and I would snake through every street in LaGrange Park, and looking for houses that were coming up for sale, and what we wanted. And I found it. I love this town. I have never voted against a referendum, because that's like voting against my own income. Because my home, at some point in my life, I will want to sell it. And you're not going to be able to sell a home if streets aren't in good condition, and if the schools aren't in good condition. So basically, we're taking care of our, our commitment to our home, our families, and our lives. And I also have a daughter that lives in town, and her and I were talking. I asked her how she felt about it. She goes, "Are you crazy, Mom?" She goes, "This is my town. I'm, I'm investing in my own home, by keeping it in a good spot and in a good place. I want to thank all of you for your, I commend you on your collected and how you've put it on the table, and you've made it very easy to understand." And I also thank you for keeping my taxes so low. Because I noticed one of those towns only has 8,000 people. We have 5,000 more than them, and their taxes are at least 2,000 more per household, that lower number of people. So thank you.
Are there any other questions, or shall the president wrap up?
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to President DiCipio to wrap it up. We have a couple of trustees here that he would like to introduce very quickly.
Thank you, Julia. Before we move on, we have refreshments for you. But first, we have two trustees here, Trustee Zora and Trustee Messick. And if any one of you would care to address, say something real briefly.
I'll make it real brief, because you've, thank you for coming, investing in your community by getting the information. Just really said, some of the questions that came up, we talk about saving and all. I've been on the board nine years, Finance Committee, all of them. We look at streets every year, and there's been a plan every year, and streets didn't just pop up. They've been, we've been working at them for my entire tenure on the board. Our five-year plan, at one point, built in, addressing savings, built in 20% surplus in every fund, every year. That's eroded, because we can't do it anymore. It's, it's how the challenges partially brought on our state, the economy and other things have come along. But it, it is something we strive to do, we just have not been able to do. As I said, the street rotation has been looked at, equipment. I was just talking with the fire chief. We, we've tried to budget for a truck every year. We just haven't had the money to put in there. We've gone for every available grant dollar we could find. Our staff writes many of the grants, and they've done great jobs, brought it in here with the help of our village lobbyists. That Public Works Garage originally was budgeted to cost $1 million to us, the village. It ended up costing $600,000. $400,000 could go back into whatever we need. We got a parking lot, some other things. So just said, look at the state, grants. There's changing times. We asked the village, we always communicate with the people, you are the village. We ask you what's, what's most important, roads. We hear safety a lot. Well, the roads are safety in a lot of ways. So to Dawn's point, to your investment, it's the biggest investment most of us are ever going to make. That's your home, that's your village. We take that serious. I've been here since I was three years old, so I take it serious, too. And I said, I would hope that everybody would support this. We don't want to have to, but let's support it. This, this is our community. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. There's handouts here for you to take. There's information on our website. I hope we've accomplished our goal tonight, and that was to inform you on the referendum questions, and why we got here, and how we established this. So if you have any questions, our staff's always available. Give them a call. But we want to give you all the information you need, so on March 15th, you can make the decision that you need to make. Thank you for coming tonight.